bear with us, please, as we end our closed session. May I have a motion to return to open session and approve Certificate 16-17-12 for the closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Miller-Richards, second by Ms. Ream. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Boyd?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Kay?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller-Richards?
Yes.
Mrs. Ream?
Yes.
River Bailey?
Yes. Next, we move to the approval of our agenda. Before we do that, I need to add an information item, and that would be 8-E-1, which is an update on mentoring programs. That's 8-E-1. We need to add that, update on mentoring programs. Now, may I have a motion to approve our revised agenda this evening?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Miller-Richards?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ream. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, like sign. That motion carries unanimously. Now, I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 3, 2016, the regular school board meeting, as well as the minutes from April 11, 2016, the joint work session of the school board and the city council.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Boyd, second by Ms. Holmes. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries as well. Now, we move on to our favorite part of the meeting, and that is recognitions. We will begin with the Word of the Month, Balanced, and that is presented by Original
Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Melton and School Board. Our Word of the Month is Balanced, and Balanced is defined as understanding the importance of intellectual, physical, and emotional balance to achieve personal well-being for themselves and others. Our VPI and ECSE students will be demonstrating one way we work on our physical and emotional well-being by doing some yoga poses, which is part of our instructional program at preschool. So take it away.
Three? Tree, okay. That's the one the board can do. Yes, give them another hand.
Good evening, Chairman Bailey, School Board members, Dr. Melton, and families. The Spirit Award from WELV, which is Women Education Leaders of Virginia, was established in 2009. It's presented to a leader who has had a significant role in supporting the mission of WELV. This leader has been actively and successfully engaged in pursuing WELV's goal of promoting the efforts and accomplishments of women in all areas of education, and increasing the participation of women in higher levels of educational administration. The WELV Spirit Award is presented to a WELV member who, over her years of involvement in WELV, has made notable contributions to strengthening the organization. Through her leadership and commitment to the organization, she has advanced the mission. Mrs. Marcy Catlett is most certainly deserving of the WELV 2017 Spirit Award, as she works tirelessly to encourage, motivate, and even push women educational leaders to meet and/or exceed their potential. Congratulations, Mrs. Catlett.
Local businesses have the power to shape community attitudes about public schools, and the VSBA Business Honor Role is a way for local school divisions to recognize local businesses for their support. The Business Honor Role helps divisions say thank you for their vital contributions. Businesses, small and large, corporate-owned or family-run, play a key role in supporting our communities and local schools. They contribute to our school division in many ways, including helping schools with in-kind or financial contributions, donating to scholarship programs, supporting extracurricular activities, offering internship opportunities, volunteering in the schools, and sponsoring field trips. This type of support is invaluable. In April, the Fredericksburg City School Board nominated two local businesses to be included in the VSBA Business Honor Role for 2017. The Board wishes to thank these businesses for their commitment to the students of our division. Their work has aided in focusing on the goal of improving the best public schools for the children of Fredericksburg City. The first business we would like to recognize is Allergy Partners of Fredericksburg. Ms. Marjorie Kindersley had some comments about the assistance provided by this business.
Good evening, Chairman Bailey, Board members, Dr. Melton, families and friends. It's my pleasure to recognize Allergy Partners of Fredericksburg, and particularly Dr. Mark Winger, for their extensive contribution to Hummersher Elementary School. They've been very supportive ever since Dr. and Mrs. Winger's older child, Eve, started at Hummersher. They helped launch our very first Booster-Thon, our big PTA fundraiser. They underwrote the cost of Booster-Thon t-shirts for every child in the school, all 870 of them, for three years in a row. Allergy Partners also made significant monetary contributions to Booster-Thon. On another note, Dr. and Mrs. Winger are at Hummersher for every school event and activity their children, Eve and Cannon, are involved in. I know Mrs. Winger comes in weekly to read to the children in their classes. I saw Mrs. Winger just today helping children plant sunflower seeds as part of an outdoor lesson in the garden. We consider the Wingers and Allergy Partners of Fredericksburg to be true community partners. Please join me in honoring Dr. Winger and Allergy Partners. Unfortunately, Dr. Winger was trying to find a parking place, and he could not find one, so I'll accept that for him. Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Marilyn Wyatt, Principal of Walker Grant Middle School. Thank you.
The next business we would like to recognize is Chick-fil-A. I hope it brought some coupons.
I just sent you samples, but yeah.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to recognize Chick-fil-A on behalf of Walker Grant Middle School and James Monroe High School. Lisa Green and Donna Street are both marketing directors for the Central Park Chick-fil-A. Of course, everyone knows where that location is, we go there often. These two young ladies have always been supporters of James Monroe High School and Walker Grant Middle School. Over the years, these wonderful ladies have provided generous donations in many forms. They have donated free merchandise cards for our students to receive a free sandwich or an ice cream. They've donated free merchandise cards for the faculty for a free breakfast sandwich, or lunch, or dinner sandwich, and often free coffee cards. They've also donated sandwiches to be sold in the concession stands sponsored by the marching band at James Monroe. They've also supported and sponsored Spirit Evening events for the middle school athletic and academic teams. Ms. Green and Ms. Street have provided discounts on teacher meals and various other special offers that we've asked for. They've always responded to our requests for American Education Week, Teacher Appreciation Week, and Back to School Week. Every time we have made a request of them, they respond promptly and enthusiastically. So we consider Chick-fil-A of Central Park, Ms. Lisa Green, Donna Street, as valued partners of James Monroe High School and Walker Grant Middle School. We are grateful for their generosity and their partnership for our students and faculty, and I'm not sure if Ms. Green or Ms. Street is here this evening. We looked for them, they are not here, they're probably getting ready for our donations for tomorrow. So, thank you very much. I'm back, good evening again. It is my pleasure now to speak to you about our Odyssey of the Mind teams. We'll begin with the Walker Grant team. Three of our teams are represented by Walker Grant Middle School in the Odyssey of the Mind Regional Competition, or OM competition, as we call it. For the second consecutive year, the following team of eighth graders earned first-place finish at the regionals and advanced to the state competition, so please help me congratulate these students. We'll begin with our first teammate, Marcus Laramie, the son of Ms. Michael Laramie and Ms. Dana Laramie. Next, we have Christian Meeks, son of Ms. Lauren Izzo. We do have a track meet going on, so they may still be away as well as a few other events, but we are very...
He's here.
Where is he?
Go on up.
He's hiding. Thanks mom's in the back. He needed a little encouragement. Next, we have Amy Ritterhoff, son of Mr. Philip Ritterhoff and Ms. Amy Ritterhoff. John Kingsley, son of Mr. Michael Kingsley and Ms. Mary Kingsley. I don't know which way I'm heading. Congratulations, dear. Next, we have Paul Lucas, son of Mr. Mark Lucas, excuse me, and Ms. Marjorie Lucas. Close enough, okay, we'll keep going. Our last, a team member for this team is Vincent Scarato, son of Mr. Paul Scarato and Let's give these students another round of applause. Please welcome Mr. Terry from Lafayette Upper Elementary School, to the podium, please.
Good evening, once again. Continuing on with our OM recognitions tonight, I first want to start by recognizing one of our coordinators. She's a teacher here at Lafayette. I always say "here" at Lafayette, like I'm at school right now. But she is also the division coordinator, and that's Shay Press, and we really congratulate her. She's done a wonderful job this year, so... We're very proud to congratulate our students. They achieved a first-place accomplishment at the regional OM competition. It was on March 4th, in Louisa, Virginia. And I don't know if you know about OM, some people in the room might not know, but it's an incredible achievement for them. They have to work collaboratively together, they have to work in cooperation, and these are skills that we're using in the 21st century. So we're really proud of these students, and they wowed the judges and did a fantastic job. So I'd like to bring up first Cecilia Lucas in Grade 5, the daughter of Mark and Marjorie Next, I'd like to bring up Elizabeth Farrow in Grade 4, the daughter of Brad and Catherine You might do double tag if you don't look carefully, because the next is Rebecca Farrow in Grade 4, daughter of Brad and Catherine Farrow, also. Next, we have Simon Young in Grade 5, the son of Ethan Young and Leslie Martin. Next, we'd like to bring up John Wilcox in Grade 4, the son of Judith Wilcox Blaster And finally, Jordan Dominguez in Grade 4, son of Jesus and Elizabeth Dominguez. One more I'd like to add on, please, and that is a very special person as well, that's Mary Moldrow, and she is in 3rd grade, and she is the daughter of Kristen Tamara Moldrow. I'd like to bring back to the podium Dr. Rochelle from James Monroe.
Good evening, once again. Each year, American Legion posts select outstanding high school students for Boys and Girls State. During the week-long program, participants receive instruction and citizenship, and experience firsthand how their state and federal governments function. This year, the delegates from James Monroe are David Dederich, son of Mr. Robert Dederich, Thomas Driscoll, son of Mr. Mark Driscoll, and Ms. Janine Colbertson Driscoll. McCray Fidler, son of Mr. Robert Fidler II, and Ms. Tristan Fidler. Roddy Gardner, son of Mr. Kurt Gardner, and Ms. Carla Gardner. Kyle Cobza, son of Mr. Christopher Cobza, and Ms. Jennifer Cobza. Charles Mauer, son of Dr. Charles Mauer, and Ms. Stephanie Mauer. Marshall Wood, son of Mr. Ken Wood, and Ms. Rose Wood. Lauren Shelton, daughter of Mr. Donald Shelton, and Ms. Jennifer Gredner. Alexis Hatfield, daughter of, excuse me, daughter of Mr. David Hatfield, and Ms. Sandy Sponsored by CTE teacher Ms. Barbara Dyer, seven students participated in the DECA International Career Development Conference in Anaheim, California, last week. At DECA ICDC, more than 10,000 DECA members demonstrated their college and career knowledge and skills by participating in DECA's Competition Events Program. Each contest had 200 students from the US, Canada, Mexico, and Japan battling for the top 10 overall places. Although our students did not place in their events, everyone improved their previous occupational test scores. JM DECA was recognized for the growth of our chapter by receiving the Membership Campaign Award. Earning the right to compete in Anaheim, the following students were finalists in their events at the Virginia DECA State Conference in March. Nellie Brady, daughter of Mr. Brent Brady and Ms. Sarah Brady, was one of, one half of a team which competed in travel and tourism team decision-making. You're welcome. Jessica Conway, daughter of Mr. John Conway and Ms. Chrissy Conway, was the other half of the team which competed in travel and tourism, this team decision-making. Lucy Castles, daughter of Mr. John Castles and Ms. Ann Castles, competed in apparel and Gina Elkin, daughter of Mr. Paul Elkin and Ms. Carla Elkin, competed in Principles of Hunter Frisell, son of Mr. Daniel Frisell and Ms. Kristen Frisell, was one half of the team competing in financial services team decision-making. Hunter also placed 3rd in the DECA 5K out of 1,000 participants. Noah McKinney, son of Mr. David McKinney and Ms. Beth McKinney, was the other half of the team competing in financial services team decision-making. And Declan Zelazny, son of Mr. Mark Zelazny and Ms. Wendy Zelazny, competed in Principles
We have one final category of recognition.
Yes. The Virginia School Board Association Regional Art Contest was started in 1989 to promote the artistic talents of Virginia's public school students. For each of the nine VSBA regions, a winner is chosen for the elementary, middle, and high school levels. The winning art is framed and displayed in the offices of the VSBA in Charlottesville and the Richmond offices of the State Superintendent of Public Instruction. The Northeastern Regional Forum was held on April 19, 2017. This year, elementary art was submitted by Lafayette Upper Elementary School, along with art from Walker Grant Middle School and James Monroe High School. We would like to recognize our participants and share their artwork. At the elementary level, Civil Burton, son of Mr. Damon Burton and Ms. Clarice Burton. At the middle school level, Georgia Jones, daughter of Mr. Noel Jones and Ms. Courtney Jones. At the middle school level, Georgia Jones, daughter of Mr. Noel Jones and Ms. Courtney Jones. Oh, wait, she wants a picture? There you go. And at the high school level, Lila Kobe, daughter of Mr. Damian Kobe and Ms. Mary Lee's Kobe. Lila is unable to be present tonight. She's busy working on a class project.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your participation in this part of our meeting tonight. You are welcome to stay for the remainder of the evening. We encourage you to do so.
The fun is just beginning. Right, yeah.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, even though our city council chambers are still clearing, and we have citizens, some of them may want to address us. So as we move along on our agenda to the hearing of our citizens, I would ask if there are any citizens present wishing to address the board? Are there any citizens present wishing to address the board? Seeing none, we continue on in our agenda to the consent agenda. Dr. Melton?
I recommend the approval of the consent agenda, which includes policy revisions, the second reading, and head start approvals.
Is there a motion to accept that?
So moved, second.
Moved by Ms. Miller Richards, second by Ms. Boyd. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries unanimously. We now need to take action on personnel. Dr. Melton?
I recommend the board approve the personnel list as presented.
May I have a motion to approve superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Holmes.
Second.
Second by Ms. Ream. Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Boyd?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Kay?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller Richards?
Yes.
Mrs. Ream?
Yes.
Reverend Bailey?
Yes. That motion carries unanimously. Our next action item is student case number 1617-1. Do we have a recommendation from our student disciplinary committee?
The student disciplinary committee concurs with the superintendent's recommendation that the school board expel the student referred to in student case 16-17-1 from the school system for 365 days commencing March 23rd, 2017. The case will be reviewed for placement before the student is readmitted to Fredericksburg City Public Schools.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Miller Richards, second by Ms. Ream. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Reverend Bailey?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller Richards?
Yes.
Mrs. Ream?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Next, we have the approval of our annual special education plan. Dr. Mel?
Recommend the board approve the 2017-18 Annual Special Education Plan and application for federal funds for Fredericksburg City Public Schools.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Ream?
Second.
Second by Ms. Holmes. Any discussion?
Yes.
Go.
So I wanted to make clear, because we've been hearing a lot in the news lately about charter schools and vouchers, and in reading the special education plan, I just wanted to kind of point out that even with children with disabilities who attend charter schools are provided services in the same manner as other children with disabilities who attend public school. So that came right from the... it did. I quoted that. So in part B. So what that means is that if there are charter schools that children in Virginia are attending, that the public school is still responsible for providing some of the same services as if the child attended public school. The same goes for, you know, a voucher program. If a child is attending a private school, again, the public school is still responsible to provide some of those special education services as if the child were attending public school. And I just wanted to kind of make that clear as we go through the discussions on charter schools and vouchers. So that's all I have.
Any additional discussion? Ready for a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. The motion carries. Instructional items, first we have the Effective Schools Update.
Chairman Bailey, board members, Dr. Melton, colleagues, good evening. Annual administrative staff provide the board with an update on the Effective Schools Framework of Shared Decision-Making. Momentarily, Principal Terry and Principal Takersley provide the board with an update on the Effective Schools Model at Hugh Mercer and Lafayette.
Good evening again. I'll tell you a little bit about Effective Schools at Hugh Mercer. As you know, there are seven corolits, and every member of the staff is on one of those corolits. Clear and focused mission, climate of high expectations, instructional leadership, opportunity to learn, and time on task, frequent monitoring of student progress, safe and orderly environment, and homeschool relations. And in each of those corolits, we meet monthly, and we have various topics that are appropriate to the corolit, and we study different items that we want to address. We reflect, we plan, and then we do, and then we start all over again. At Hugh Mercer, we... I'm going to give you a brief rundown of each corolit very quickly. Clear and focused mission, we did staff breakfast and Patriot Path this year. That's that outdoor classroom that we now have in place that classrooms are now using. Climate of high expectations for success, did attendance incentive awards and end-of-year awards criteria. And then frequent monitoring of student progress, we started behavioral mentors. Homeschool relations, did reading, math, science STEM night, instructional leadership, did the homework committee, representatives on the homework committee, Division Y homework committee, and the integration of international baccalaureate primary years program. Opportunity to learn and time on task, did Patriot Pride Fund Days. Safe and orderly environment, did healthy Hugh Mercer Walking Club. And now I'd like to get to some specifics, things that I really wanted to focus on that we consider most important. Attendance coaching. This was homeschool relations, and this is a new initiative this year. Teachers will be the first point of contact. This is really, really important. In the past, it's been the office. Now it is teachers who call the parents regarding student absences. The corolit has provided a draft script for teachers to use. This is for teachers who are uneasy with calling parents at home to see why their child was absent, and it gave them things like, "Hi, Mrs. Smith, this is Danny's teacher, Mrs. James, and we missed him at school today," or things like that. And there were a variety of icebreakers for them to use. And then we sent home flyers outlining tips for an easy morning routine, and this is for parents. This was an effort to help parents get students going to school. We would set a little alarm clock, have a regular wake-up time, just have their clothes ready the night before, things like that. Teachers report improved relationships with parents, not just the attendance, but the attendance data shows increase in student attendance, which was our goal. The other thing I wanted to focus on was our reading, math, science STEM night, which we had just about a month ago. It was hugely successful. It displayed activities that included grade-level reading and math curriculum materials presented by staff, student science projects, the Central Rapid House Regional Library was there. We had a book exchange. We presented a number of community resources that parents don't know about. We had Easter egg races. We had math wizards who would quiz children on math addition and subtraction. "What's six times six?" "Oh, what's six plus six?" "12." Okay, you get a prize, that sort of thing. Other STEM activities were butter making, color-changing eggs, building towers out of shapes with toothpicks and marshmallows, Easter eggs and Play-Doh, investigating fingerprints, and this was really a health thing. Well, you could put them in there, put the fingers in there, right? And see how many germs they had on them. Constructing paper airplanes and flying them in a wind tunnel, Lego challenge. We also had drones, and we also had snakes and animal skins that were presented by the Pennsylvania Sheriff's Office Animal Control Division. Any questions?
I saw pictures of the snake.
They loved this. They were not venomous snakes. And the kids can handle them, and the kids loved them. The parents, not so much. Other questions or other comments? At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Matthew Terry, principal of Lafayette Upper Elementary School.
I would like to say I think that making teachers the first point of contact for absences is brilliant.
It's been amazing. It's just the connection that's made between the classroom and families, huge.
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening again. I just made a list up here just to show you who's in charge of what in terms of the corolits, as you saw earlier, with all the corolits in terms of what we do at the Building Leadership Team. I will say that as I go through tonight, every time we do this, and we try to choose for you all what to highlight, it's amazing how many things get done through these effective schools. Personally, I'm just so invested in this because our staff works so hard with so many different things that... and they give a perspective on things that I don't have at times. And some of these things evolve in a way that I don't anticipate. So I think that although we highlight a couple of things here tonight, we really present on this monthly, and it's amazing how many things get done through these corolits. And I'm very appreciative to that, as you can imagine, because our days are quite busy as well. So it's nice to have that collective effort. The two things I would like to highlight tonight are done by the corolit Positive Homeschool Relations, and that's our SOL Parent Night, which is very important to us, as well as the graduation ceremony, which we don't talk about very often, but it is an amazing collective effort. Both of these things require a large amount of collaboration. So I wanted to highlight them this evening, and the graduation is from the Clear and Focused Mission. Which, by the way, I would like to mention that the Effective Schools corolit lead for Clear and Focused Mission is a paraprofessional. And most of our corolit leads are teachers and instructional folks that are full-time. Cindy King is in charge of Clear and Focused Mission and does a phenomenal job. And I just want to make sure that's mentioned tonight because I'm really proud of what she does. I'm going to skip back over to SOL Parent Night. We studied that. We've studied that for quite a while. We've had that in place for several years now. We've examined our SOL performance data, and we've offered out different sessions for SOL Parent Night so that parents can come in and choose what they'd like to hear about. We have two sessions, plus a general session, and we do Feed Them, which helps, so they can come out and eat. At that, we then feed them and talk to them in a general session, and we do breakouts. At that point, we offer those breakouts based on some of the things that we see in the previous year in terms of SOLs. Each grade level will do a breakout session. Mrs. Brady comes and discusses assessments. And we also have other guest speakers as well, and they've studied this, and it really has increased our parental involvement. We see a lot of third-grade parents coming out because they're new to this. So they really appreciate that quite a bit. And this year, we really thought this was important because we have a lot of recent changes with our assessments. So these assessments are really important so that parents get to hear what these CAT assessments or these computer adaptive assessments look like, sound like, feel like, and how they can practice at home. So as you can see under Reflect, we have our corolit lead, our corolit who studies that and reflects on it. Our Building Leadership Team is a big part of that, and they include our faculty and administration. And then as we plan through, we begin to promote the event, and they do a collective effort promoting this event to parents. We send out alerts, we send out flyers, we put up posters, we put it on Facebook, all the things that we can think of. We've become very more creative with that through this process. And we, again, we have that meal, and that seems to help get people out when you feed them. The last bullet here is the Do, and that, we've sent out several years now, survey data, and that's another way for us to collect information from these parents who come. And they get to, you know, give us their feedback, and it's predominantly positive through the last few years. This year, we went a little... we leaned on technology, and we wanted them to do a survey online, and we got last data. So we're going to go back next year, and if we do that, we're going to, again, this is the Reflect process again, we're going to go and make sure they stop at a computer before they leave, so we can get a little more information. But it went really well this year, and we're very proud of what we did this year. Here's some pictures. I thought you might enjoy that. So these are some pictures of some of the events that happened. These are grade-level breakouts. You can see Ms. Griffin was doing a sped. She was about in the middle and the bottom. Next to her on the right side is Leslie Baxter-Papoli. She did one on technology. We had the lion out front greeting and welcoming students. So we had a great time, and it was just a good collaborative effort all around. The graduation ceremony, again, this is by the corolit led by Cindy King. This is amazing. If you've been to graduation, you know how smooth it is. That is not me. That is this corolit, and they do a fantastic job. They've revised this every year, and graduation goes off smoothly. They look at the dismissal process, which we've had to change. They look at the enrollment, the tickets. All of that is a very big deal and very orchestrated, and they do a great job with that. Under the Reflect process, again, I put the folks who were involved in that reflection. And then as we plan through, the speakers, we are very honored to have Mayor Greenlaw for the last several years. That's been wonderful. They collaborate, they communicate with JM to get that building use, and all of the stakeholders involved, as well as the invitations, which is, again, a very important part of that graduation ceremony. And then, of course, it happens. So we have that at James Monroe. We're glad, we appreciate that. And we have a grade five farewell party that evening, that they're also a big part of planning. that they're also a big part of planning, so we appreciate that. And those are the two things that we wanted to highlight, but again, there's a lot going on, and I know there are in every school. So are there any questions that I can answer? Well, we appreciate your attention and, and support. Thank you.
Beg?
Good evening. We have the March thirty-first financial report in front of you, and just to highlight, we're getting towards the end of the year on these reports. We have a positive variance on both revenues and expenditures. When you add those two together, it's just over two percent. And I wanted to remind you that we're now operating with a revised budget that includes a prior-year appropriation of some fund balance. So that fund balance was designated and reserved for, for use in the current year, and then the other piece is, of course, the current year budget activity. But if you put that percentage together against the total budget from, from the fund balance and the current activity, you could estimate that if we came in at that two percent, we'd have about nine hundred thousand fund balance to be carried forward into the next year, which I'll remind you, we're running a forty-two million dollar budget, so while it's not a huge amount, it's also not insignificant. It's about how we've been doing the last two or three years. Are there any specific questions about this month's report that I can address with the board? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Gordon?
Good evening, Chairman Bailey, Dr. Milton, our remaining guests. Several months ago, we did a small presentation kind of updating the school board on the different levels of mentoring programs that we had throughout Fredericksburg City Public Schools, with a special help from Supervisor of Technology, Mr. Joshua Long. I'd like to provide a short video that shows you some of these programs in action and some descriptions from students, as well as the sponsors. Mr. George?
I have two specific programs that mentor students beyond the classroom. Jump's objective is to empower freshmen with knowledge and to help them build relationships that will sustain them throughout high school. We also offer our promising female students an opportunity to join the League of Extraordinary Young Women, a mentoring program sponsored by Mrs. Buffett and the Sunshine Lady Foundation. The purpose of the league is to prepare these young ladies for the college application process and college life. Through the mentoring process, the league provides additional support as needed to ensure the academic success of the young ladies who participate.
Here at Hugh Mercer, we, we stand behind that, that old saying, "It takes the village when it comes to educating the students here." So with the breakfast buddies, that is something that has been in place for, for several years now, and it actually allows community members to come in and have breakfast with the child and offer just one-on-one support in, in a way that will kind of develop a, a very positive relationship. At this point, we have about twenty-four, twenty-five volunteers in the outside community. With the Dads Who Care program, this program has also grown. It's very popular. It is a great way for a dad to come in for one day. It's a one-day commitment, and they are able to choose a date within the entire school year, and they are here for a full day from eight fifteen to about three thirty, and they spend time in their child's classroom along with other classrooms in the building. They have lunch with their child at their lunchtime. They have their picture taken, and they have some, some special daily data information that's shared over the announcements, and it's also on our daily dad board. And it has actually grown to where this year, we have about, we have seventy-five volunteers to date, and we, we always have at least two, sometimes five dads who are volunteering in a week.
My name's Erin. I'm with the SWAC program. Students with a Goal is a Walker Grant Middle School program that supports and introduces young men to mentors who have a diverse background, offer tips and advice to successful in and out the classroom. The mentors also offer free tutoring, academic resources, and inspire students to strive for higher education.
Hi, I'm Keazia.
And I'm Kylie, and we're going to be talking about the all-girls group called Emerge.
Emerge is an all-girls group that we participate in at Walker Grant to keep girls from jungle. We also go places and provide assistance with making good decisions. Emerge is the place you want to be when you're going through a lot. Emerge stands for a Positive Approach to Girl Development. We empower, motivate, educate, respect, give, and encourage. Join Club Emerge.
Lafayette Upper Elementary School has been fortunate to have the BIGGS after-school program for several years. This is a mentoring program that we offer in cooperation with the Rappahannock Big Brothers' Big Sisters program. At the start of the year, Lafayette staff identifies students that might benefit from participating in the program. The BIGGS program recruits, interviews, and trains volunteers, and then matches each volunteer with a student. Our BIGGS volunteers are students at the University of Mary Washington.
At Lafayette Upper Elementary School, breakfast is an exciting time for many of our students. That's when their breakfast buddies come to visit. Mentors have been assigned to students chosen by teachers and administrators. We have mentors that are firefighters, police officers, bankers, doctors, and other professionals. The program is in its sixth year with forty mentors and over forty-six children participating. The goal is to help students start their day off on a positive note.
Thank you.
That was really nice.
Yeah, it was.
We should put that on Channel Eighteen. Yeah, sorry.
Very good. Moving on to old business, we have a number of items. First, on the sixteenth, we have Board Doc's training. And that, what day of the week is that?
That's a Tuesday. But Ms. Wright, where is that going to be?
That will be down at the Executive Plaza in the area that they have set up for training purposes now.
First floor.
First floor.
Okay.
Was there going to be any possibility for remoting in, or should I just not worry about that?
We can still work on that.
Okay.
Probably very doable.
Mike will work on that.
Ms. Boyd, I bet you might be able to figure it out on your own, too.
Maybe.
You'll have that big microphone from, you see that huge microphone?
Yeah.
I think it's big. Also, we have the Law Conference. That's not until June, but we won't be together before then. Well, we'll be together on the sixteenth, but right now, Dr. Milton, Mr. Russ, Ms. Holmes planning to go. I'm assuming I'm going, I think. Did I say I wasn't? I just didn't say I was. I'll probably, yeah, I probably will go. I'll check. Let me see. Also, two other items we've talked about before, but I want to make sure I bring them up so that you can get them on the agenda for next time, you'll know they're coming. We've talked about, oh, let me first remind, well, I guess it's just me, we got the hot, hot topic that was rescheduled for Wednesday in Withville that I will be going to, I alone will be going to.
And we really appreciate that.
Thank you, Jarvis.
What is that? I know Patty Pitts will be there. It's on our teacher, it is a personnel, oh, it's a personnel hot topic.
And so, Mr. Russ, are you participating?
I possibly will be here now.
Okay, so Board of Distinction, since I will be, we've talked about this before. The last time I inquired, we were on track, but I do need to reconfirm, and I want to put that on the agenda so that I give a report, so that it makes us be accountable. And I do know we were still lacking a board retreat, but here's the thing, even if we're not on track for the Board of Distinction, we still need to have a board retreat, Dr. Milton. So we need to figure that out. We, we, we.
That's right. That's our job.
Yes.
Send out some dates.
Yes, I'm just giving a heads up, so you guys know. That's coming, that will be on the agenda item for me to give a report to hold me accountable. The second thing that we've talked about, we had the students come in for the recycling program, and I got an email today, and I know that the Clean and Green Committee as a commission, as well as those students, are working on a project for World Environment Day, and they're going to present us the opportunity to either do a proclamation or some sort of resolution. And World Environment Day is a big deal. It's June fifth, and it has to do with protecting the environment and something, something, you know, not something, something. It has to do with getting outdoors and staying green and all that kind of stuff. So I know that's coming June fifth. We don't have to do anything except affirm or proclaim or resolve or, or do something, and they'll get us that. That's coming down the pipe. Any other old business? Ms. Miller Richards? Did you have something?
Remind us, Mrs. Wright, when is James Monroe's graduation?
June ninth.
June ninth, okay. Just trying to get all these dates on our calendar, and I did ask Ms. Wright, which she very graciously agreed to do, was to send us a list for all the end-of-the-year stuff. We have some of it on, on here under new business, but the invitation we received from Lafayette's graduation, and the one we will be receiving from Walker Grant, all that stuff, so we can start putting on our calendars and determining which events were.
And we actually meet on June fifth, too, don't we? That's a meeting night. Oh, that works out. Okay, great. Anything else? New business? Division-wide retirement? We have some assignments that we need to divvy up for that, right? Same as usual? Somebody has to pray? I think it's, I think it's time for Ms. Boyd to pray.
I could never be as good as you.
Well, in that case.
I think you're stuck with that one.
I'm stuck with that? Let's see. Orientation for Board Chair and Vice Chair and new board members. Have you done one of those yet, Ms. Boyd? You've done that. And I don't think you've come, do you need to?
I've actually done it, too.
You've done, okay. So we're good.
I think we're okay.
All right. And then the Conference on Education is that next day, and I suspect many of us will go to that. Boys and Girls Club Dinner coming up, June eighth.
We, we need, how many of you would like to go to Boys and Girls Club Dinner? We have one table. We have, right now, seven seats available. We're reserving those for any of you board members if you would like to take a spouse. If not, I'm going to try to fill those seats with other, possibly administrators.
Do you, you have a time when you need us to respond by?
Do you have a time it is?
It's June the eighth, five P.M., but you need to know.
June eighth at five.
You need an answer from us by?
We need, I need to let them know.
Okay.
Anybody? No?
I don't think I can go.
No, no.
It's the day before graduation.
I know. See, that's the thing. It's the day before graduation. That's tough for us, too.
I can probably go.
I can let you know by tomorrow.
Okay, tomorrow will be fine. Confirm tomorrow.
Okay.
And you may bring spouse.
Confirm tomorrow.
I'm not sure he's going to really want to.
Okay.
All right. Confirm that tomorrow?
Please.
Any, yes, any other new business?
If not, I'm going to make Mr. Russ go and.
I know, I don't want to take a seat from any administrator who would like to be there.
Any other new business?
Did you notice they all looked down at the same time?
Go to the order?
Oh, yes. I'm very much looking forward to Walker Grant's Beauty and the Beast. It is this Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and last year's Lion King was fabulous, so don't miss it.
I was at the job fair, regional job fair on Saturday, and I heard that there was an incredible soccer game between JM and Cortland.
Oh, yeah, there was.
It was the talk in my little area, and so congratulations on that superb win. Anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
We're done.